Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanak.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director and Assistant Manager Parker.
Here.
Again, would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I want to welcome everyone. This is a special board meeting. Before we move on to the agenda, we have our regular open forum. Do you have any requests that came online?
Mayor, there's one comment that was entered under public comment, but it's not open forum. It is actually regarding the agenda items. So there's no open forum comments, but if we can return to this later.
Okay, we will on that, but I do have a request from Frank Trout, 328 North Womette on Memorial Day. Mr. Trout.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
We'd like to invite you to our Memorial Day service this coming May 31st at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park. We're going to be dedicating the Robinson Memorial. And along with our regular Memorial Day service, there will not be a parade this year, but we will still have our memorial service at 11:00 a.m. So we're inviting the entire village board and along with all of our residents, if they would like to join us for that day.
And I do have to tell you, the area has been renovated or is in the process. It looks beautiful.
Yeah, they're renovating the area, working hand in hand with the park district. Bob Fleck has done a fantastic job and we've had 100% support with the Westmont Park District. And so along with contributions from other organizations in Westmont and in the area to honor Jim Robinson, who received the Medal of Honor, was given... For those that don't know, was a Westmont resident, was basically born and raised in Westmont. He lived here about 10 or 12 years. His grandfather was a multiple-term mayor of Westmont, along with being a Westmont... His mother and father were also raised in Westmont back in the early years. So this is a fitting thing which to do, and so we're very excited about it. And last year, we asked the mayor and the village manager about our contribution. There wasn't money available, but this year there was a couple of thousand dollars which they donated, or I shouldn't say donated, but money became available to help with the monument. We asked for 10,000. We got two. So of course, we're looking for the other eight when financial times get a little bit better for the village. And so we'll still be back knocking at your door to help with this memorial, which benefits the whole village. Thank you very much.
Frank, I understand with your contribution and stuff, you're only about 40, 4100 out right now? 4,100 is the shortfall, I understand.
Oh, I was told, yes. They... I'll tell you what, with the work in which we're doing for it, we asked the village for 10. From what I understand, we've received 2,000 on that. And so anyway, but we have all the different organizations helping and it's very, very, very heartfelt to see that. And we really like that.
Oh, good.
Linda?
I just wanted to commend you. The flagpole is taken care of.
I'll tell you, I have a hearing problem, so...
The flagpole is, looks very nice.
Linda, which I really appreciate, she's a very direct person. And she put me on the spot last year, which I enjoyed being in. And she encouraged all of us to do a little bit better around the memorial site at Veterans Memorial Park. And so I really appreciate that. You did help me and the American Legion Post 338 in improving the site and giving that little energy shot which we needed. Thank you.
Well, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to being there. Thanks. Since there's no one else here for the open forum in this part, I will close it and move on. Unless somebody has something they'd like to talk about, I'm going to waive the report portion of this and move on to introducing tonight's special meeting. This, I just want to point out that this topic has been discussed in a lot more detail at the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing. The best time for members of the public to speak about items like this is at those public hearings. I'd like to thank everyone who participated there and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission who looked into this in a lot of detail. We have watched those meetings so we can take this information into consideration. While we don't need to go over everything from those meetings again, we do want to have a brief overview and allow the public, especially those who were not able to attend the other meetings, an opportunity to make some additional comments directly to the village board. Tonight, several different groups will provide information and comments to the village board. Then the board will discuss it and vote. And here's how we're going to run the meeting tonight. First, staff will give us a brief overview of the topic and the items on the agenda. Next, the developer will give a presentation about the project overall. Then we'll open it up for public comment. If you're going to speak, we want to make sure you register your name with Chief Gunther so that we can call you up to the microphone. After the public has spoken, the village board will ask any questions and discuss it amongst themselves. Finally, after all that discussion, we'll go through and vote on each of the agenda items, or we may postpone. I now ask our Community Development Director Sylvester to start us in this overview.
Mr. Mayor and Trustees.
Oh, before you start, I'm sorry. I failed to introduce and welcome Amy Lee Simonovich. Did I do that right? If not, I'm going to just call you Amy Lee. She is the newly-elected trustee. And she'll... She'll be sworn in with the rest of those who were elected next Thursday night. And at that point, we'll let her say something. So now the floor is all yours.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and trustees, as you know, and for the members of the public who may not, my name is Bruce Sylvester. I'm the Director of Community Development for the Village of Westmont. As mentioned by the mayor, I'm here to present an overview of the proposal that's being presented to you tonight by the developer, Rich Cammonley, who will be arriving shortly, and his team. But I want to just give you a broad overview so you understand what's being proposed and the multiple items that you will be asked to approve if the proposal is to move forward. I'm going to try to stay at a very high level without getting into the weeds, but I just want you to have an understanding of all of the pieces that need to be approved for this project. I'm going to be focusing on the land use aspects of it, the plating, the vacating, the dedicating, the zoning, all of which I'll touch on in a moment. When I'm done with that, the Director of Finance, Spencer Parker, is going to provide a similar broad overview of another item that you'll be asked to vote on tonight, which is an economic development agreement, which is basically an incentive package. And Spencer Parker will provide you with an overview of that as well. After we give our staff overviews, again, as the mayor briefly mentioned, the developer will be given the opportunity to come up and take as much time as he would like to present the details of what is being proposed. After the developer makes his presentation, any members of the public who wish can come up and speak. And I believe the plan is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, after all of that, then you, as the trustees, will have a chance to really dive into this, ask questions, make sure you understand what is being presented and what is being proposed, so you know that before you vote. One other thing I'm going to say, I rehearsed this and I think I can do it in 12 minutes. But I'm talking kind of slow and the mask kind of makes me take long pauses for breath. So I'll keep it on for now, but I appreciate your patience. So in real broad terms, what's being proposed? It is a redevelopment of multiple properties in the northeast corner of Cass and Burlington, right across the tracks. I think you're all familiar with the site. To create a seven-story, mixed-use apartment building with ground floor commercial, structured parking, and a surface parking lot with 174 apartment units and various associated building features that you would expect in a large apartment building. And again, the developer will provide you with those details. The proposal requires multiple approvals, and I'm going to try to explain this in a way that hopefully is easy to digest without getting too much into the weeds. The first piece basically is site assembly. Currently, that area consists of three different kinds of land property. There are village-owned parcels, and that would include the municipal parking lot, and that includes a vacant lot at 14 North Linden. Second, there is village-owned right-of-way. Right-of-way is where streets go. It's not parcels. It's not land that can be bought and sold. We call it right-of-way. And third, there is private parcels that are owned or under control of the developer. That's what's there today. That all needs to get mushed together and combined into a big developable site. And we call that site assembly. Some of the items that you're being asked to vote on tonight are basically to assemble the site. So first, the land, the parcels, I want to be clear here, the parcels that are owned by the village need to be sold. And that's item 6B on your agenda. And if you want to tick off agenda items as I go through them, you'll see kind of what I'm hitting here. We can get into the details later, but maybe Manager Mayor, the mayor can correct me now, but the land will be sold at fair market value. That's not part of the incentive or the subsidy. But that land needs to be sold. Secondly, the land that is currently right-of-way, not a parcel, needs to be vacated. And this is item 6B on, or I'm sorry, 6C on your agenda. Vacating right-of-way is just the term we use to take land that isn't a parcel and cannot be bought and sold and turning it into a parcel so that it can be bought and sold. So we need to vacate right-of-way if this project is to move forward. Similar to the parcels that the village already owns, like the parking lot, it will be sold at fair market value. The sale of what is now right-of-way, after it's vacated, is not proposed to be part of the subsidy. Those two items then need to get merged, consolidated, mushed together with the properties that the developer already owns or controls. The method to take all of those different pieces and put them together is item 62D on your agenda, called a plat of subdivision. But I want to emphasize, don't get stuck on the word subdivision. That's the term we use. But it's really a plat to take all those little pieces and put them into more logical, bigger pieces, which I'll explain in a minute. The plat of subdivision is what reorganizes the properties into a developable site so that the developer can build the building and the surface parking lot that he's proposing. Everything I've just explained, I would put under the umbrella category of site assembly that you're being asked to approve. I want to just quickly talk about right-of-way because I want this aspect of the proposal to be clear to the trustees, but also again, to anyone watching at home. One of the end results of this, of these multiple steps is that the alignment of Burlington Avenue is proposed to change. So today, you all know that the north-south portion of Burlington Avenue runs in front of the small strip mall at 13 through 19 East Burlington Avenue. Part of what is being proposed is to take down that building and the building immediately east of it and move the north-south portion of Burlington Avenue further east. So I think from your perspective, it's, this is Cass, and here's that piece of Burlington now, move it east. And the reason is hopefully obvious. It makes a bigger piece of land for the proposed building to sit on. That, too, is a part of what would be accomplished when you approve, if you approve, the plat of subdivision. But I just wanted to make sure people were clear about that particular detail. When Burlington, or if Burlington Avenue is realigned, there will be some other modifications that get triggered. And I don't want to get into the details now, but how it aligns with and intersects with Linden, how it aligns with and connects with some alleys are some other features of what is included in that plat of subdivision item that you'll be asked to vote on. So again, that's all broad site assembly stuff, 6B, 6C, and 6D-2. If all of that is approved, then the developer would essentially have two lots. A big lot between Cass and Burlington Avenue, Cass and Burlington Avenue, with Burlington Avenue pushed further east. The alignment of Burlington Avenue on the south will remain basically where it is now relative to the railroad tracks. And that big lot, the new lot, will be bounded on the north by what I'll call loosely, an alley. But it won't be an alley that is a through alley for vehicles. The western portion of that alley will be restricted to vehicles, and the developer is proposing to designate it as an outdoor seating area. The eastern portion of that alley would be a connection to the current north-south alley that's behind the businesses on that block, like Moskva, previously Amber, and on to the north. But that alleyway would be the northern border of the big lot, and that's where the building is proposed to sit. North of that, and between the current north-south alley and Linden, would be a smaller lot where the developer is proposing a surface parking lot. And that really, in very broad terms, is what the developer is proposing, a big building and a surface parking lot. As I mentioned a moment ago, the proposal that the developer will get into the details of would be seven stories tall. Which leads me to the last part of my presentation. The building that is being proposed requires some zoning approvals. And these are all listed on your agenda as the many, many items under 6D. And while there are many, I think there are 19, they fall broadly into six categories that I'm going to briefly describe. The first one is site and landscape plan. To me, that's really where you would say, after hearing from the developer, what is being proposed? The building, the number of units, the amount of parking, the appearance, the height, the setbacks, everything about this project that the public will see, you like. That's all encompassed under or included within the vote for site and landscape approval. When you approve the site plan, that includes the building and everything about it. So I would say that was, that's kind of the big one, although all of these are necessary. The second category that those 19 items fall under on the agenda, item 6D, is a zoning map amendment. And this is kind of a cleanup item, but when you vacate right-of-way and create it into a parcel that can be sold, as I described a moment ago, it doesn't have any zoning designation. It's not R zoning or B zoning. So we need to designate it with zoning. That's number three under that, of those 19 items. The third category of the various zoning approvals are special use permits. So you ask, why are special use permits needed for this? The surface parking lot on the smaller lot to the north requires a special use permit. And this is, I think you're all familiar with some recent examples. About 18 months ago, Nature's Best proposed a surface parking lot on land with residential zoning. They needed to go through the process to get a special use permit. The village proposed a surface parking lot right over here on Lincoln. That's on residential land. The village had to apply for a special use permit. Same situation here. That's why there's a special use permit in the mix. That's the third category. The fourth category, and the biggest number of items under 6D, are variances. So we have all kinds of rules about what buildings can be like in the village. Yard requirements, parking requirements, height requirements, all kinds of requirements. The rules in our downtown were never really written in anticipation of a building this tall and this big. And so to allow a building like this, variances or exceptions need to be approved from all of our rules. And they're all listed there, but they touch on things like distances from property lines, height, parking, we should maybe call special attention to, et cetera. All of those variances would say that the rules that we typically impose are being waived for this particular project. That's the fourth one. The fifth one is just plating. So I think that's 62D. I've already covered that. And then the last one is the developer's agreement, which is item 19 on that long list. The developer's agreement just adds more specificity and a little teeth to some of the requirements to make sure that this is a quality, nice development in perpetuity. It talks about maintaining concierge or front desk services. It talks about long-term maintenance of the interior finishes and the streetscaping and landscaping around the perimeter. It's an agreement between the village and the developer to make sure that this remains a quality development. And that's item 19. And again, we can get into more detail later. I just want to quickly comment, everything under 6D is what had to go through Planning and Zoning Commission. Those are all the zoning components of it. That's why they're all grouped together under 6D. The other items are not required to go through Planning and Zoning Commission, and therefore, they did not go through Planning and Zoning Commission. So if you've been keeping track on your agenda, I think, I hope I've hit 6B, 6C, and 6D, all of the items 1 through 19. All of that together is site assembly, road reconfigurations, vacations, dedications, plating, and the entitlements, the zoning approvals for the actual building and parking lot itself. So what's left, the item that I will not be covering is item 6A. And that is the economic development agreement. So there is an offer of some financial assistance, and that's included in item 6A. And I'm going to conclude my presentation, and I think this is where, Mr. Mayor, we would ask the Director of Finance, Spencer Parker, to provide an overview.
I wouldn't. I appreciate the summary for us. And I failed to acknowledge that those who did all the heavy lifting for this project is in the back. Two of our planning and zoning members, the Chair, Doug Carmichael, and the longest-serving, Wally Brand Buren. So I thank you for all that you've done, and it was easy for Bruce to summarize that for us. Finance Director Assistant Village Manager Parker, you'll talk about the financial end of it in a quick overview.
Yes, thank you. So as we look into a TIF, Economic Development Agreement, I want to kind of give a brief overview, especially for the benefit of the public. A TIF is what's referred to as a tax increment financing district. And this is something that the village set up. It's an economic development tool that allows for development that wouldn't happen otherwise to be able to happen. And the way that it works is when the county is calculating how much property tax the different entities receive, they use a formula where they figure out how much additional money the entities get based on inflationary rate. And then they divide that up by the property value in that district. So that's how it works for the schools, the parks, the library, the village, sanitary districts, all of us. And then what happens in a TIF district is they say, let's look at the property values in this district and for the next several years, as we're calculating the rate and how much we need to charge to get the right amount of revenue for the district. Then what happens is they pretend that the rate hasn't changed and they treat it for just that calculation as if the rate, if the property value had stayed the same as it was before the TIF. Then once they have that rate, they apply that rate to the increased property values, the increment where it's increased. And then that goes into a TIF district to be able to be used to help projects happen or to provide additional infrastructure in the TIF to be able to spur that kind of development. And we look at economic development agreements and incentives, things to be able to make development happen. If it's a situation where that development would not happen except for that incentive, those economic assistance. And they call that the "but-for" test. So but for this assistance, this project could not happen. So what happens is the developers put together their analysis and they submit that to the village. The village looks over it, and we also send it to one of our consultants who specializes in economic development analysis. And they confirm that without the assistance of the village, this project couldn't happen. And so we're going to talk a little bit about what kind of assistance is needed to make this development something that can happen. So in order to make it work, there's a few pieces. So Director Sylvester's already talked a little bit about the selling of the village property, the appraised value, and that's both our real estate property as well as the vacated right-of-way. And that's roughly about $2 million. Another set of economic development assistance that we're providing is we're capping our permit fees at about 1.2 million, 1,250,000. And based on a rough estimate of where we typically land, that's about $20,000 less than we usually would charge. So that's a little bit of incentive and assistance that the village is providing. About 500,000 of that permit fees are amounts that we're not passing through. And so that's kind of a net cash benefit to the village of that roughly $500,000. So in terms of money that the village is getting as part of this project, kind of the upfront money, we're receiving the $2 million for the sale of property and roughly 500,000 for permit fees that aren't passed through. We also are spending about 3.9 million in upfront infrastructure costs. And in terms of when the village is interested in contributing things upfront, the standard preference of the village is to do as much of that as we can in terms of infrastructure so that something has changed or has happened or there's a new asset as we're spending this money. And so we are spending 3.9 million for all of these infrastructure pieces. What we get out of that is we have a new parking lot that will be up on Lincoln. It includes moving Burlington Road, as Director Sylvester talked about, and then also moving a comm ed utility, which currently runs under the property and will need to be moved along the road. So if you add up all of those cash flows in and cash flows out, we look at upfront about 1.4 million in net negative cash flow. So we're going to be down about 1.4 million in the first little bit of this project. But over time, we recoup most of that. So as we talked about, the TIF district generates payments because the value of the property goes up, which allows us to take that revenue and reroute it to the developer to make this happen. When the TIF was established, we also had an agreement with the school district that a portion of the TIF revenue that's generated is used for school improvements within the TIF. So those are improvements that are done simply within the TIF district, not for anywhere else in the school district. And when we estimate how much we expect to receive from this, we expect that in terms of total TIF revenue, 70% will be going to the developer, and that's what the economic development agreement includes. development agreement includes. That's estimated to be roughly 6.1 million up through 2036. With the school, they will receive 15% of that for a portion of the time, and then 25% for the remainder of the time during the TIF. So they'll receive about 1.5 million, and then the TIF district itself will receive about 1.1 million, receiving 15% for the first 10 years and then 5% for the rest of the time after that. So if we had the 1.4 million net negative upfront, we're receiving about 1.1 million through 2036. If you're just looking straight dollars, under a good-case scenario, we're looking at about a $300,000 deficit when you lump the Village and the TIF together. But I will say, technically, they're two separate funds and two separate systems, and so what will really happen is the TIF will be in a $2.8 million deficit, which will be offset by the Village having advanced funds. And if the TIF's not able to pay that back, then the Village will just be out the money. But altogether, the net deficit for the Village and the TIF is about 300,000. And I will say, there's also a provision in the economic development agreement for additional costs that may happen with regards to the moving of the comm-ed utility. There's a number that's fluctuated a little bit. Initial estimates put it around 800,000, then a higher estimate put it around 1.5 million. Current estimates put it about 600,000. So that $300,000 deficit is based on our current estimates. You do have to pay the full amount that we would max out. That amount in comm-ed, we're looking at about a $1.2 million deficit, looking at the Village and TIF altogether. So those are the cash flow pieces, so the money coming in and out. But there's other pieces to be considered with this, other sort of assets that are involved in this. So one, the first piece to note is, as a result of all this, with that deficit that we talked about, the Village is going to own a little bit less land, because right now we own the parking lot at Burlington, and we also own some land up on Lincoln. Once all this is completed and done, we'll simply own a parking lot up on Lincoln and not additional land. But at the same time, we will have received the cash for the land that we sold, and then in addition to that, we'll have a newer road, a newer parking lot. And then really, the big piece, the big investment that we're making in this, is that we'll have an additional 174 new units downtown, which will generate the additional foot traffic downtown. And the hope is that this, along with other projects that we're doing, will help spur additional growth and business for our downtown. And that's really kind of what we're getting for the deficit. So it's spending some money to be able to generate those additional foot traffic. And I will say, it's very possible that this additional foot traffic could spur other growth, and if it does, and if the property values in the rest of the downtown also increase, that will provide additional money into the TIF, and that will be able to be used to offset that deficit. So we talked about potentially a deficit of around 300,000. That might be less if this serves as a catalyst to spur additional development and additional growth downtown. Economic Development Agreement also includes a couple of things for some contingencies. So the first thing that I'll note is they have a look-back period analysis, and basically what this is doing is it's double-checking that "but-for" test, confirming that without this assistance, this development couldn't happen. And so the way that it's structured is, once the development is stabilized, we'll do another calculation, looking back at what actually happened, and not just our current calculation, which is estimating what we think will happen. We'll confirm that they still aren't to a certain level of profitability, and that if they exceed a certain level of profitability, then going forward, we won't be contributing as much as we had initially planned. And we'll do this look-back period every couple of years, just to make sure that the development still does need the assistance, and that it made sense to do that assistance. Another contingency that's in here that we expect probably won't be exercised, but it's in there just to make you aware that it's there as a just-in-case, is the opportunity for the land to be re- conveyed to the Village. So there are some deadlines that are listed in the agreement. If those deadlines are not met, then the Village has the ability to, in essence, purchase the land back for the same price that we received for that land. And so those deadlines include, the first step is getting a final plat, which will have to occur within one year from today. The next item will be the closing, so the actually closing on the land as well as the closing on the construction loan, which occurs 60 days from when they get the final plat. Construction will have to start 18 months from the final plat, and then construction will be mostly done within two years from when they get their building permits issuance. Now, if you've added all these things together, and each thing takes the full maximum amount that's allowed for each set of the deadlines, that puts it about four and a half years from now. But we also have a stipulation that construction will be mostly done no later than March 1st of 2025. So that puts kind of a final deadline on the project. I will say, we don't know that it's going to go that long. You know, obviously, if things move more quickly than listed here, that's even better, and things can go, certainly go more quickly than that. But this is the deadlines that are listed in the contracts, in the agreement specifically. So that concludes the staff brief overview of it. We're going to have the developer presentation, after that, the public comment, and then after both of those are done, the board will have the more detailed discussion, and of course, Director Sylvester and I are happy to talk through any more details about the items that we've presented at that time. There's no additional questions on this kind of high-level overview. It may be time, Mayor, to allow the developer to start their presentation, unless there's any high-level questions we can answer right now.
Thank you. Could understand it. The, just one comment, we have three major TIF projects already. Mariano's with the South TIF, we've got the Mystery Grocer and L.A. Fitness, and then we have Holiday, three big ones. I think we also have another one. So the TIF is, it works, it's put in place so that we can provide assistance, so that projects that normally would not go can be funded, and the developer can move ahead. So these are things we've been using in the past. I do have to say, anybody in here, please mask up if you're in this conference room. I do have to remind everybody, if you're out in the hall, go to a washroom, that's fine. But we're asking everybody to keep their mask on unless they're talking. And at this time, I'm going to ask Director Sylvester to introduce our developer and his team to make his presentation.
Richard, you want me to introduce you, and then you can introduce your team? This is Richard Gammonly, he's the developer, and he's going to introduce his team.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my late entrance, mitigating circumstance, and I do apologize. But again, my name is Richard Gammonly. I'm here on behalf of Westmont Apartments Limited Liability Corporation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, and members of the audience who are present and may be online. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to present this project, this exciting project that we believe is going to be a catalyst for the downtown. I stand before you to present One North Cass Avenue, residents at One North Cass Avenue, after receiving approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we begin, we would like to show you a brief slide presentation, and we'll make it brief of some of our past and current projects, so you can kind of see what we do and who we are. So, Tom, if you could. At which point in time I'm going to introduce Tom Fujikawa of Fujikawa Johnson Architects. He'll be giving part of the presentation as well. And we'll just quickly kind of go through, I don't know where the screen is going to appear for you. You're going to pull it up? Who does this?
Yeah, there should be.
It's showing on the device, right? It's showing on your device?
Yeah, it's showing here.
It'll be, one second.
Again, we won't take up too much time with some of the past things. I know that there's a lot of material to cover. So I'm just going to go through briefly some of the projects. Residents at One North Cass, we specialize in quality mixed-use infill developments.
Mr. Gammonly, you face the microphone, and you can look, you can look at the...
Do you take your mask down if you're talking? Yes.
You can look at the laptop, too, if you want.
Transit-oriented developments, including projects such as, they're about to show you now. Tom, if you want to just keep fast-forwarding. Projects in Oak Lawn, Downers Grove, Station Crossing Downers Grove, Glen Ellen, additional projects in Glen Ellen. We develop more than, one, there's time, you can go back. We developed over 1,200 townhouses and condominiums and senior housing units, additional 500 apartments are presently under construction or in process. Again, in downtown Rozelle, downtown Oak Lawn, we've created Main Street USA, downtown Oak Lawn, more Oak Lawn. We also have done projects as large as high-rises. This is 1111 South Wabash, which was the highest or tallest building in the South Loop prior to the regentrification of that area by the Fogelson Group and Central Station. We work with groups and municipalities in terms of RFPs, TODs. This is Park Avenue Station, right down the street in Clarendon Hills, consisting of townhouses and condominiums. Residents is at Seven Bridges in Woodridge, mid-rise building right on the Seven Bridges Downtown La Graine Spring Avenue Station, as well as Kensington Station, two separate projects, both consisting of townhouses and condominiums, as well as apartment and residential. Elmhurst Market Square. And we were able to work within, Victoria Square Townhouses in Oak Park. We were able to work within infill sites and challenging sites in order to create a varying degree of projects with varying degree of architectures. This was a high-rise we completed at the corner of Chicago and Orleans, with 198 units in it, although it says 17 years now. We've been doing this for over 22 years at this time. Keep going. Now, Tom, do you want to give them a little bit? Tom Fujikawa's going to, of Fujikawa and Johnson Architects, going to give you a little bit of background on his firm as well. And I didn't want to go spend too much time just dwelling on the past projects, but you can see the level of quality we've done in many municipalities and towns such as Westmont, so you can see what we're capable of building. And again, we try to take architecture that fits a particular downtown, so you won't see, and you probably didn't see, a lot of buildings that looked identical. Each building is kind of unique to the municipality and to the downtown, and that's what we've tried to create, is something unique for that municipality in downtown. Tom?
Good evening. Thank you. As Rich said, my name is Tom Fujikawa. I'm Principal Architect of Fujikawa Johnson Global Architects. We're located in Chicago. We have had the fortune of working, fortunate to work with Rich on several projects in the past, which I can show you. I guess we lost the screen again. I'll bring it back up. Okay. There you go. Yeah, our offices, we've been in business since 1982. The history actually goes back further than that, but I'm not going to bore you with those details. Suffice it to say, we have been active in mainly the Chicago area. We do a variety of different projects, commercial as well as residential. Obviously, today, we're focused on the residential projects. Okay. So just quickly, again, I don't want to spend too much time on past projects, as Rich said, just to give you some examples of some of the work we've done. This is Columbus Plaza in Chicago, Buckingham in Chicago. Majorities are in the Chicagoland area. 175 North Harbor. This one happens to be Museum Tower in L.A. 55 Erie, again in Chicago. This is Vetrol. This is one of the projects we actually work with, with Rich. He mentions 1111 South Wabash. This is 1600 South Row, again with Rich. And then Chicago Orleans, another Gammonly project. And then we do a variety of feasibility studies for various clients, everything from mid-rise to high-rise to mixed-use planning. So these are just examples of some of the projects that we've been working on. And again, just a collage, since I don't want to go through all the projects we've done, we've got quite a bit of work in our portfolio, but we do have projects that range from interior renovations, retail, commercial, office, new office buildings. We designed the municipal center for Naperville, worked on the Naperville Bell Tower. So quite a variety of different projects in our portfolio. We also do hospitality, hotel renovations, a variety of daycares, land planning, and special use projects, preservation, historic preservation, fire stations. There's a bell tower you can see on the bottom there. So that's just us, real briefly, real quickly. Again, I don't want to stay too long on that. I think we want to talk about the, go to the project itself.
And again, we wanted to keep the presentation brief in terms of the past projects, but again, just to show the team experience and the kind of levels and the buildings that we're used to doing and what we're capable of doing. And again, the sites that we've dealt with range anywhere from infill to cornfield to you name it. And again, all these sites typically have a variety of issues, such as EPA or train lines. I mean, we specialize in TOD, as you've noticed, so most of our, you could probably say that 90% of our projects are surrounded, are surrounded by metro lines. Okay? Again, we're going to talk about the residences at One North Cass, just in a brief overview. The residents of One North Cass, there's 174 units, approximately 6,500 feet of commercial on the lower level. We have both enclosed and surface parking and separate lots. Our units will consist of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Mix, the marketing mix on these units will be approximately 60% studio and one-bedroom and 40% two-bedroom. That's an approximation. Okay? At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tom, and Tom's going to go through some detail, the detailed plans, and walk you through the actual plans for the building.
All right. I thought we'd start out quickly, briefly, by explaining the site. I'm sure you're all familiar, since it's just sort of out the window, but for those of you who need a refresher, those that are online, what you're seeing on the screen is a photograph, actually, the top one is almost from this view, of the corner at Burlington and Cass, the southwest corner. The view on the bottom is looking across from, on the south side, across from the railroad tracks, and some other context views of the existing conditions. Right now, as you know, it's a parking lot, is the main portion of the site. This shows you, if you can see that, what I'm pointing to is the parking lot. This, this is Cass. This is Burlington as it currently exists. As you know, it does a sort of an S curve, goes north and then continues east. And so as Bruce Sylvester was explaining, that roadway will be moved over to the east, closer to the water tower, the water tank, actually, to create a larger parcel for the project. And the, the on-surface parking lot, that he's referring to, are these two residential lots. That is what will become the parking lot. So just diagrammatically, this shows you what we're going to do, is to reroute this road slightly to the east to create the larger parcel. So now, let me show you what we're going to, what we're proposing to put there. So what you're seeing on the screen now is a site plan. This is showing, once the Burlington Avenue has been relocated and is further to the east, you can see here is the surface parking lot that occupies the current two residential So this is just a view as, you know, a site plan, so if you're, as you're flying overhead. This is the ground floor plan, first floor plan. And this is Cass Avenue, Burlington, as it goes and turns north and goes east. The first floor will have retail space on Cass Avenue, retail space on Burlington Avenue. The lobby will be here at the corner of Cass and Burlington, and what you're seeing in yellow is essentially the ground floor residential spaces. So they're not units, these are services that are required for the operation of the building, building, the management office, mailroom, services that are required for the function of the building, along with internal parking. So there's going to be two interior parking floors or spaces that are accessed... So there's going to be two interior parking floors or spaces that are accessed from the east side of the building off of Burlington Avenue over here. And so you're seeing the ground floor portion of that parking garage. This is the second floor, so this, now you're seeing the second floor parking garage. This is the first floor where you start to see residential units, and you'll see that there are different colors that just represent, the pink is essentially two-bedroom units. The, the blue, the blue is one-bedrooms. So, and you'll see on the elevation, the second floor as viewed from Cass and Burlington, you won't see a parking garage, you'll actually be looking at units. This is the third floor. At this point, the building steps back, and there will be an outdoor space for the use of tenants, including an outdoor patio with amenities. This is, this is shared commonly with everybody that's living here. Again, you're seeing a mix of units. There are a total of 174 units. There are 15 studios, 87 one-bedrooms, and 72 two-bedrooms dispersed throughout the This is the fourth through seventh floor, so this is a typical floor, whether you're on the fourth, fifth, sixth, or seventh floor, essentially looks the same. Sure why it's not coming up? Okay. Not sure why it's not coming up. But this is the elevation, so this is what the building looks like on the east side. So this is the Burlington as it goes and goes a little bit north, so this is the short end of the building on the east side of the building. This is the north facade, and I'm going to, I'll come back, I'm going to see if I can, for some reason, it won't show. These are the materials for the building that we're proposing. Again, we're sticking as close as we can with the guidelines established for the Westmont downtown area, predominantly masonry in appearance, not only on the facade of the building, but also on the horizontal sidewalk areas. We have, as you can see here, masonry, brick pavers, very much in keeping with what we currently have in the downtown area. We have site furnishings, everything from benches, planners, again, keeping, in keeping with what's common in the downtown area here. For consistency's sake, bike racks, tree grates, where we have trees in the sidewalk. The building itself will have brick masonry, cast stone, we're proposing precast concrete. All of this, all these materials are commercial-grade, durable, and fire-resistant, as required by code. And at the ground floor level along the sidewalk, areas where people can get up real close to the building, we're going to highlight some of the facade with stone materials, so granites, polished granites, to give it a little more accent on those floors.
Could you pull the microphone just a little bit? I mean, you don't have to stand there. You're okay where you're at. Will you just aim it at you a little better?
Yeah, it's fading, you fade sometimes when you're stuck.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this better?
If you want to take off your face covering, you can while you're talking.
I'm okay, if you can hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. So this is a rendering, taken as you are looking at the southwest corner of the building. So this is the main entrance, right here. This is the Cass Street, Cass Avenue facade. This is the Burlington facade. So this is the south facade. This is the west facade. Seven floors, so that you're looking at the ground floor with retail here. These are the building, the lobby, management office, and again, building function spaces, and then retail, again, back here along Burlington. This is the second floor where the residential starts. Then you have, again, third floor where the building starts to step back. You have three, four, five, six, seven floors, a total of approximately 82 feet from sidewalk to the top of the building. It's not showing up. Apologize, I'm having technical difficulties. It's not showing up. Let me try another view. And I apologize, it's not behaving the way I want. This is an earlier version. We actually lowered the building. There was a turret element here that, again, working with the Planning and Zoning Department and neighborhood comments, we did lower the building and actually eliminated an element that isn't necessary for the building, but also helps to lower the overall height. So that's the building briefly. Rich, if you want to.
Can you go to a site frame, please?
Sure. Hold on a second.
I want to talk a little bit more about the building now and some of the thought process that went into it and why we designed it the way it is and how it got to be what you see before you right now. I'd like, you know, I'd like to say it's, this is not.
Yeah, hold on a second.
This is not the fifth version, this is not the sixth version, this is probably the 17th or 18th version that you see before you. We started probably with five to six different versions internally, till we thought we had something that was what we wanted it to be and what we wanted to present. At that point, after meetings internally with village staff and discussions with different commissions, we got the versions nine, 10, and 11. At that point in time, we started working with, into staff internally with some staff changes, and we got the versions 12 and 13. And we met with planning and zoning and made a bunch of numerous changes, and we got to what you see before you now. A lot of the thought process that went in here, and I guess I'll, can't move around. Do you have a pointer, like a laser?
Can I have a? Yes. The green button there.
Okay. All right, so I'll use this, can everyone see this screen here? Okay. What we tried to do again was, it's not going to show up on here, but we wanted to orient the garage onto what would be the east elevation of the building, because it's going to be the least, it's going to be the best place for sightlines and to have the most attractive elevations and present the cornerstone for when you're coming down Cass Avenue. So the garage was oriented onto the east side of the building. The service lane, including the, the area in between the Linden parking lot and the building there, all of deliveries, all trash service, everything takes place back through there, in essentially an alley, abutted only by our parking lot there, so as not to cause any conflict. The primary elevations being the west elevation and the north elevation, again, with, excuse me, the south elevation and the west elevation, is where the detailed facade was, and in working with staff and working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, to come up with everyone believed what was the best elevation, using elements of stone and brick, and to make it as attractive as possible, again, for the cornerstone as you enter down Cass Avenue. All of the commercial along the west elevation, along Cass Avenue, and I was designed to have restaurant and outdoor seating for Alfredo Dining. In addition, the courtyard area there, the shaded portion, that will also be for dining, for restaurant use, in kind of conjunction with Amber, where Amber used to be on the side there. So a lot of thought has been going into how the building would be laid out. In order, in order to keep the massing down, again, we created the, as you see with the green area, that's all open from floors three and up. So it just forms a nice, big, open courtyard, and it has south exposure for the residents, and to give it that W shape, if you will, for Westmont. When we looked at park, when we looked at traffic circulation, again, in working with staff, engineering, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, all the traffic circulation for the garage entrances were kept on that side. We also have a carve-out on Cass Avenue right there for drop-offs for Uber drivers, Lyft drivers, et cetera, for drop-offs, so as not to obstruct traffic. So a lot of planning and thought has gone into the building in terms of creating the most attractive facades, the most efficient building in terms of ingress and egress, pedestrian access. All of the sidewalks and courtyards are done in conjunction with village requirements in terms of planters, landscaping. There'll be features such as fountains, bike racks. The building itself is a fully amenitized building. So you've got a fitness center, a massage therapy center, you have what's called, it's a gaming entertainment area, there is a spa, which is a mini pool, there is men's and women's, obviously locker rooms and washrooms go with that, dog washing stations, we have electric car charging stations in the car, in the garage. So it's, it's got a coffee station in the lower level for when residents want to have, just kind of hang out and have coffee. It's fully amenitized, it'll be a 24, excuse me, not 24-hour staff, but 24-hour secured building, but with a staff monitoring, again, from eight to five every single day, including the weekends. Sales staff and management staff will be on staff, professionally managed. Right now, we're, right now, we're looking at Greystar, which manages over 17,000 units. Okay? The management company that'll be handling all the management in the building. That's a little bit of the thought process that's going into the building itself in terms of what you see before you and how it got here. Okay? First and foremost, you know, we believe the project's essential to the downtown. To not only revive and to regentrify the downtown, but in order for it to survive, in order for it to keep growing and to become what it can be growing, what it can become. The foot traffic, the new residents comprised of primarily Westmont residential, whatever market studies have shown is that about 50% of the building will come from internally in Westmont or its immediate surrounding communities, and then they'll draw another 50% from the surrounding communities, which adds new residents and new traffic to the downtown. One only has to, only has to look at towns like La Grange, Downers Grove, Elmhurst, Lyle, Clarendon Hills, that have made this transition and bringing this type of product into the downtowns, and look at how well they're thriving and how, what's done to the other commercial. It's regentrified the other commercial, or some of the non-user-friendly commercial stars that only have eight-foot ceilings on the first floor, or kind of strange configurations. They'll give way to people that are buying those spaces and want to piggyback off of the new residential units, the new demand, and the new commercial we're going to be bringing into the, into the downtown area. All of those towns I just mentioned have one thing in common. They all have one of our projects, and then we were either the first or the second project in that downtown, to help catalyze and start those downtowns to regentrify. Every one that I mentioned, with the exception of Lyle. But all the other ones, they all have our project, and we all, we were either the first or the second one in, and everything piggybacked from then and created, you know, these regentrified, thriving downtowns with the commerce, the traffic, you know, the desire, and just creates more, more desire to be in that downtown and more desire to be here. You're going to bring in additional commuter users, additional residents, additional transition projects, some, you might get some smaller, somebody's going to come in and want to do a 10-unit townhouse project over here, they're going to find a location. You're going to get transitionary projects, or projects that will kind of stem and spread out from this one. Okay? I mean, this is, it's not hard to see what's happened in, again, those towns, and I pointed them again, Downers Grove, La Grange, Elmhurst, Lyle, these towns that have followed a similar pattern, and similar even smaller towns like Clarendon Hills, which have seen a miniature version of this happen. Okay? As far as the economics on this, I mean, one cannot discount the ancillary benefits that are going to come in from the new commercial. I mean, there's going to be new commercial projects bringing in new revenue, there's going to be new tra, foot traffic in the downtown, new tax revenue. And I remember in 2020 saying, gosh, somebody had mentioned something about 2000, or, excuse me, in the year 2000, when we turned over, and I remember someone mentioning something about 2020, some 20s, and I said, oh, I can't even believe it's that far away. Well, it's here now. And 2035, the tiff ends. And that's the same, and at that point in time, this project will then start generating tax revenue that will go directly into the coffers, into the different districts and the different bodies that will split that revenue, and over a 10-year period, it's going to be in excess of $8 million, just in that 10-year period. So when I thought about 2020, 20s being so far away, it, it won't be, and it'll be for the next generation, but it's going to yield that kind of revenue once that tiff ends. One of the things, and one of the other questions as well, you know, COVID hit, is, you know, is this going to delay anything? Is this going to start anything? Is there still demand? I mean, is this product in demand? The answer is yes. First of all, it wouldn't be here if it wasn't. Our lender wouldn't keep giving us permission to move forward if it wasn't. Second, what we do every, every month is monitor what's called CoStar. CoStar is the reporting agency that reports to every single developer, every single appraisal company, every single research company, and gives you the demograph, not the demographics, but the absorption and the rental rates on every project in the Chicagoland area. So what we typically do is poll our competitors. Just to give you an example, these are the CoStar reports from March. Okay? Our main competitor is the Mark on Main in downtown Lyle, 94% occupancy as of, as of Feb, or March. Maple and Main, Downers Grove, 95.5% occupancy as of March. Burlington Station, right in Clarendon Hills, 98.9% occupancy. Uptown La Grange, Cook County, a little different, but on the metro line, in, in the transition, same, similar unit counts, 94.1%. 229 Park, 94 points, 97.6% occupancy. So even though with COVID hitting, and even though when you look by and you see some of the commuter lots empty, the demand is there, there's a lot of flight from Chicago, the suburbs are seeing a lot of people just, they want to get out, and this is where they want to go. The, the numbers speak for themselves in terms of where they are and what that absorption is and the demand for it. And it only leads me to think that once you start to see those commuter lots start to fill back up, it's only going to get better. So are we confident in the market? Do we feel there's any concern? We don't. Obviously, the only thing we're concerned with is the volatility in commodities right now, which I'm sure everyone reads about, but even that's going to level off by the time we're, we're expecting construction to start. That's the only hurdle we've seen so far in some existing projects. So again, we believe that this is going to be a catalyst for the downtown. We believe it's the right projects, we've gone through a number of trials and tribulations in order to get the roadway where it's supposed to be, get ComEd in line. In addition, mentioning ComEd, I have been liaising myself with ComEd for the last six or seven months with their new bids. We've checked their working drawings, their design drawings, we've asked them, done everything, but asked, asked them to verify their quote in another language. So they have verified and probably know us in six or seven emails, not exaggerating that that number is valid as of right now. So we have no reason to believe that that number will not stay consistent to where it is now, with plus or minus for unforeseen conditions. That being said, we respectfully request approval for the project, and we're open to questions and answer anything you may have.
I think what we'd like to do is allow the public to speak at this time. You know, I'll close the public section, and then the board can ask questions.
Okay. Thank you.
I understand that we did have one.
Dr. Esposito.
But you also had one online.
I have one online as well. Do you want to do that first?
Yeah, let's do that first, and then I'll call upon the individuals that are here.
So we have the, the, for as long as we've been doing hybrid meetings or remote attendance, we've also had an online public comment mechanism. It is primarily developed so that allow the opportunity for open forums, so people could speak to, address the village board remotely without coming into the building. This forum tonight was used by one person who was, has a comment, submitted it as a open forum comment, but it's actually about the topic. So that's the comment I'm going to read now. I just wanted you to know how it, how it appeared. So the comment from this afternoon, Sharon Anderson, says, "Reading through the agenda for the 4/29/21 special meeting, it appears that a decision has already been made regarding the public plans for One North Cass. Is this accurate? If so, it is quite unfortunate that our downtown will have not one, but two, much too large buildings that will most definitely take away from the charm, from the charm, I believe, was init, I'm sorry, will take away from the charm, I believe, was initially intended for the downtown area. We don't have to look to Lyle, we don't have to look like Lyle or other towns to have done the same near their train stations to improve our downtown. Invest in current businesses, parking, new businesses that current residents can enjoy. If it has been approved and will be moving forward, please reconsider the number of stories and ask the architect to rethink the exterior style, revise it to be unique, charming, and complimentary to the existing downtown versus large and..." charming, and complimentary to the existing downtown versus large and honestly quite ugly structures planned to be, referring to the designs that were posted over a year ago. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And now we'll move on. I, I have one individual who is here, Stephen Esposito. He's not only a resident, but a business owner. So at this time, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and state your comments.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, this time. Nice to meet all of you in person. I'm Steve Esposito. I'm a local dentist. I bought the Patrick, bought the practice of Patrick Blaney, located at 19 North Cass Avenue, right on, right in this zone. Incidentally, I have family, my parents, who own a home on the opposite side of Linden at 32 East Burlington Avenue. So, and I lived there for seven years while I was paying off my student debt for dental school. So I'm very familiar with this area, the ins and outs of what it's like being in that area, the parking lot, the traffic, the alleyway, and a lot of the things that are mentioned only in, in small detail here, but certainly as a resident, not just a resident of Westmont, or former resident of Westmont. I currently live in Clarendon Hills, but I own the building and the practice here in Respectfully, I do think that development of a building there can certainly bring a lot of the benefits that they talked about. I think that there's several details that need to be mired over. I know that in zoning meetings, I've come to them to bring some of these up, and certainly, whereas with any large project, there's going to be benefits, but also things that people will not find beneficial. Obviously, there's some question of the size of the building, and I do think that with respect to most of the suburbs that were mentioned, that as buildings go, certainly for these suburban downtown areas, most of these do not have a building of the size. That doesn't mean there can't be one, but certainly if there is to be one, it should be something that integrates well with the town, and not just a, from a feel standpoint, but of course, the economics do have to work out. I made a list of things that I know I've brought up in previous zoning meetings, and I think that's worthwhile addressing here since it's a different number of folks, and certainly, if, if only to bring it up as a matter of discussion and thought, and certainly with respect to the way Westmont currently is, to where it wants to be, and that it's an evolving place. How did they, there was a quote on Facebook about, one of the mottos that Westmont had, I think, either prior to or was proposed at some point in the early eighties, where they, before it was called the Progressive Village, it was also, it said something like, "Respect of the old and looking to the new," or, you know, honoring the new or something. So balancing the two, which I think is very important, because Westmont is an unusual, unusually special town in that we have, we have a great mix of residents that are younger and older. We have people who are wealthier and poorer, and that a building like this can certainly bring a lot of prosperity, but we have to ask ourselves at what price. The things I'm going to list here are not in any particular order. You know, I found out about this particular meeting about a week ago, and, you know, of course, we've got our daily lives and everything, and it's not something I, you know, try to make a stink over. Certainly, my hope in all of it is that there can be a very positive marriage between the ideas that come up with new development, as well as with making certain that the existing buildings and existing Westmont, as many people know it, can still recognize it and say, wow, this is definitely an improvement to my town, without a sacrifice of something that we love, things that we love. So, no particular, I'm just going to bring these up, and certainly, if it just generates discussion in whatever fashion. It's not geared with any particular emotions. You know, certainly, when I first saw the building for myself, I was excited, because I'm like, great, new development. But then, in the way it was presented with the details, a lot of questions, negative questions came up in my head, too. So I'll just present these, and as they get discussed, I hope that they're at least considered beyond just a thank you. So, the first thing is, and this has nothing to do with this particular project, but as far as TIF money with the granting towards the building and everything, just for perspective, we as small business, I, I want to say thank you to the town of Westmont for giving us some economic assistance. We received a $25 check in the mail from 2020. I know that doesn't quite compare to the, the amount of TIF money that's been offered, but as far as a grant to help businesses that are already there, I just bring it up as a point of disparity, but certainly, I just wanted to mention that. The second thing is that I know there was some reference to Clarendon Hills. I know I marked on the paper that I was a resident here, only in that I own the building and the business, obviously, but I do live in Clarendon Hills. I pass through the downtown often, every day, to come to work. And as much as the projects that are mentioned there, you know, have been deemed as things that have spurred great economic growth, I can certainly say it's not something that I've seen going through Clarendon Hills. There's plenty of retail stores that are closing and struggling as well. Yes, you have beautiful buildings and commanding high rents, or high, or high condo prices or whatever, but it's not keeping that charm of allowing those who are mom and pops, small businesses, to say, I could even afford being here. So just wanted to make it clear, at least from a, again, a residential, anecdotal residential point of view. We have beautiful buildings, but a lot of retail is dying. That happened in Hinsdale as well. I grew up in this area, too, and Hinsdale has great buildings, and a lot of them are not drawing in that charm the way that Westmont does. There's talk about non-cash gains and losses. You know, one thing that stands out to me, and again, I'm not trying to say this is a bad project, I'm trying to say that there are things that, you know, made me ask questions. There was talk about loss of land to the town, and understandable. My, from my point of view and perspective, particularly for that area, and, and just for, you know, just to bring this up, before I came in, part of the reason why I was late was I took a photo of the parking lot as it was for the day, at six or just before six o'clock, just to see how it was being utilized for the businesses that are currently there. And it was about, you know, and it was just pre-dinner on a weekday, and for pre-dinner on a weekday, I think it was about 80% full. I took a picture. I didn't do the math, but I took a picture just if, if people do want to see it. But, but it was pretty full, especially given that Vignatori has now been given to a new owner who's rent, you know, revamped the menus, and it's gotten popular. Moskva, which took over, Amber, also very popular. And on the weekends, there is no parking available in that lot. And so, so given that the alternatives that are being brought up for parking, for public use, would remand everyone else who's not part of this residence, and this is not mentioned, has not been mentioned yet, but the parking lots that have been designated for the building, or in conjunction with the building, are designated private lots, meaning that all the people and all the businesses that are in front of those parking lots would not have access. That means my own patients would not be able to park in those parking lots. Rick Martin's clients would not be able to. The salon, that's, that was once Aaliyah's and now moved, their clients would have to go park, you know, park somewhere. All of those businesses would not be able to park there. And I know from asking my own patients, where do you park? It's the lot. I also don't know where people for Vignatori, the tailor shop, the pharmacy, you know, their accessibility will be reduced. So having accessibility is the loss that I think that needs to be regarded here. And certainly, if there was a concession for parking for public use there, I think I would feel a lot better about it, not just as a business owner, but for the other business owners in the area. Other things that come up are, you know, less, you know, less of my realm, but certainly questions that came up. The step back building design, for example, you know, in my head, I look at it, I go, you know, that's kind of a cool aesthetic, but is it sacrificing what's already limited public land for an aesthetic that would, again, confine it to small use? And I think to myself that public land is a very valuable commodity. You know, I don't know how you would price it here and there and everything, but to limit it to 174 residents or less to create that aesthetic W that was discussed, it seems a little bit, I don't know, it seems a little, well, it seems that it needs some thought in my mind, and I, as much as I respect the design and the process, and know that it's very challenging, it's, it's just something that I thought about. Let's see. The view from the residential end of the building, meaning from the Linden and Burlington view, is not quite as aesthetic. And so I do think about that, again, from where my parents would be living soon, and then also just from all the residents who decide to walk to downtown. It really looks like we're looking at the behind of a building. It's not welcoming. It's sort of like saying, here's the wall that you really cannot or should not cross. And notwithstanding, now Linden is going to be where Burlington dumps into, and I'll tell you, when I worked across the tracks before I purchased my practice, I can't tell you how long those lines would back up. And with 174 more residents, parking and everything, I don't even know how long that's going to look there. And then it will create a new problem for the city to then address with other money that hasn't been earmarked. So, so those are things I think about, too. Let's see here. The alleyway, I know that that was a debate in the past, too. The alleyway in their designs have illustrated a two-way alleyway, and if you have two narrow cars with no trees and no dumpsters, it could be correct, again, because I park in that area, and certainly because it will become a freeway of sorts for access for locals who are trying to get into and out of the new parking lots. If it stays the size that it is, it's definitely not a two-way alleyway. And so that may end up alternating some of the plans of how to design the lot or parking lot, or if that's even part of it. Or it would ultimately mean the loss of our garages for all of us on, who own businesses on Cass. We lose our garages, how does that work out? I don't even know. And so in the end, you know, what's that going to look like, too? Is it going to be a bumpy alleyway? I know that there's been talk of putting bricks there, but will the bricks be created two-way? I know when I've, when a garbage truck, or even when Nycor was putting new gas lines in this past week, absolutely no passageway for a second automobile. And I even asked the garbage truck guy at one point, who was dumping my garbage, I said, can two cars pass through here at the same time? And he said, expletive, no. So that's, that's what came up, so.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
I just want to, everybody, I'm not, everybody's interested in your comments and your thought, but unlike planning and zoning, that is a public hearing where you have.
I'm on my last one.
... unlimited comment. You should be concise with the rest of it.
And with all due respect, I'm the only one here, so.
That's why it's gone on this far.
Yeah. Thank you. So, and then the last thing is just the, the only thing that I, again, ask questions about is the overall economic, you know, feasibility of the project. You know, there was talk about, well, this is the only way it could be worthwhile for the project to move forward, and yet, in all of these suburbs, there is not a majority of buildings that look like this. And so I question, you know, how the size and scope of this building with respect to the existing Westmont world can only, only sustain a seven-story building. So I don't know, these are just things I wonder about. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, I'm very in favor of development and growth and positive change, but keeping protected the things that we respect from the past. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. At this point, it's an opportunity, if anybody else here would like to address this item, seeing none, then I am closing the open forum portion of it.
Public comment.
Open comment. And now it's the board's turn to ask questions, comments to the developer, but we don't exchange with the audience, so the only thing I can say to start off is that this, this project had a lot of different moving parts, and because of that, the size of the building had to be such that it covered all those moving parts. So that's the only, you know, five stories, seven stories, but in order to make this profitable with the way it's been designed, it needed to have the additional floors to make it work. So between all the different things, that's, that's just something I wanted to lead off with, so everybody understands that it was kind of an economic decision to make at that size. So who wants to?
May I, if I may, I just wanted to recap Director Sylvester's introduction. There, there are, there's only one subject matter here, and it's this development, but the, the, on the agenda for those that arrived at a different time, there's the, the, under new business, there's the item A, which is the TIF and the Economic Development Agreement. You heard Mr. Parker's overview of that before we heard the developer presentation. You have the sale of real estate, which is its own item, will require a separate vote. You have the vacation of the right of way, which is just related into the exchange of land that we're talking about. And the fourth item, which is 19 points by itself, is the site and landscaping plan approval, the plot of subdivision, and then the various zoning ordinances that need variance or other attention on that. But I'm, I'm just pointing that out because the discussion can be on all of the subject matter. When it comes time to vote, we'll go through all of them.
Yeah.
Successively, in succession, I should say, and the, but the, the discussion should be on any and all of it.
All the items on there, and we get to the last one, we're going to ask that those be done in a block, just like we do a consent agenda. If a trustee wanted some, one of them to be taken out, we could. So at this point, the floor is open to the board to ask questions or comments.
So a motion first, or no?
No, this time we're going to just, yeah.
Question on any item, mayor?
Anything on the agenda. We'd like to get that done first, and then get to the voting. So, who wants to lead off?
I'll make a comment first, is just to thank everybody, including you, mayor, and all the staff on this project, regardless of how the vote goes, what a time suck, but what a good, good thing to be working on. I really think so many directions in the time duration, and all the staff, and the public, and the Plan and Zoning Commission, what a colossal project. I mean, it's one of, if not the biggest development that we've dealt with since I've been here, and I, I think that's exciting just from that standpoint. So, I, I mean, I, I have a ton of questions that I think have already been answered. I think one of the major ones that, that I want to ask just out of the gate, and I didn't hear in the presentation earlier, that I, I already know the answer, but I'm sure many of the board members do, but I think the public want to know is, and I was asked this from a few folks, is what's your target audience for these tenants? What type of, what type of people do you, are you going to be targeting? Who do you think's going to be marketed to, to come in here and, and potentially live here? And I think a lot of the residents that asked through or four, that emailed me and asked this, they're just kind of curious, you know, they want to know. And I know what my reaction was and what my response was, but I think to hear it from you just publicly would be helpful to many of the public.
Okay, absolutely. To give you an idea, first of all, to start with kind of the price range, I think that would be kind of give you a, a little bit of an understanding. The average, when you take the studio, the one bedroom and the two bedroom, all the square footage is combined, divided out, the average square footage of the units in here will be about 950 square feet. So a studio can be 600, one bedroom can be eight, two bedroom can be anywhere from 11 to 1200, but they all average out to around 950. So the easiest way to kind of say, well, what, what's, what are these going to rent for? What kind of crowd, what, who's going to have the money to afford these? What's it going to be? They, the market dictates right now, they'll be about $2.20 per foot. Okay? So on average, for an average unit in here, it's going to be around $2,000 a month for the type of unit. So the type of, we're anticipating is, again, young professionals. You've got kids that are coming back from college that necessarily don't want to be in the city. A lot of people don't want to be there, but they don't want to be too far from where they grew up, but they want amenities, they want a spa, they want a fitness center, they want a social situation where they can be on the deck, or be in the spawn, meet other people, or mingle, or be in the downtown and walk to the pub, or walk to the restaurant, or walk to where they want to go. So you're going to get young professionals, children just coming back from college, believing their parents. You're going to get a young professional couple that's just starting out maybe with an infant. These types of projects don't generate children, which is a boon for, for, it's a boon for the school system. So you're going to get, unfortunately, in today's society, you're going to get a divorcees that, you know, looking to downsize, or you're going to get the couple that's saying, okay, let's sell the house, we've lived here our whole lives, but we don't necessarily want to leave our churches, our doctors, our families, our friends, but let's buy a house in Florida, buy a house in Arizona, buy a house in Missouri, and then keep the, keep an apartment here so that we're still close to our friends and family and be seasonal in that regard. So it's going to be a kind of a blend of those groups. Married young professionals, single young professionals, divorcees, or seniors. Married young professionals, single young professionals, divorcees, or seniors that, again, are, are not seniors, but empty nesters, per se, that just, they don't want to leave their town, but at the same time, they'd like to commit their funds to a, a house where in another warmer climate. So, they get the best of both worlds, so to speak. So, it's kind of a blend of those and that's what you see across the board in most suburbs.
Thanks.
Since trustee Nero started, we're just going to go around. So, and any other time you get a question, just add in, but I'll go to trustee Little.
My quick question that I had was, are you concerned with the rising cost of construction materials and availability of the product, given that you haven't even gotten started on the project yet?
Every day, we're concerned with construction materials. And that's also a little bit of good news for us, is that, you know, we're kind of at this peak point now. I mean, lumber, I can tell you, unfortunately, I shouldn't know this, but I do. Lumber was at $3, excuse me, $335 a board foot in May of 2020. Lumber right now is at $1,050, excuse me, $1,050 a board foot. And they will not let you lock a contract unless you're ready to sign two weeks beforehand. Obviously, a lot of buildings, like some of the ones going up, were using a podium methodology, which was concrete with wood above. It's turned out right now that concrete and wood are pricing out about the same. Our building is not wood-based, although we are seeing a rise in commodities in steel, even PVC. So, yes, we do monitor it, we price it and watch what it's doing, but the good news is that everybody we talked to says they're expecting everything to kind of settle back down by the end of the year. But, as I hedge, right now, our numbers with our lender are based upon current figures, which we have priced as recently as 30 days ago.
Another question that I had is, how long will the roadway be under construction? We just put our public works building on Burlington and they're going to need access for snow removal and everything, so how long will Burlington be under construction?
That's a good question, and I have been talking, we have been talking to staff and engineering about it, and there are two schools of thought on that. One is that it may take three to four months, or in that range, but it may make more sense because we're going to have cranes, large shipments of material, to possibly keep it closed for a longer period under agreement, just to stage everything from there. So, you know, if it just went in terms of building it, I mean, probably three to five months, that would be my best guess and estimate. But, if we decided to do something along those lines in a mutually agreed-upon scenario, rather than trying to stage off of some other area, like more than likely the lots on Linden, it probably would make sense to realistically shut it for some time, but I would defer to the village manager, Steve May, on that.
I mean, there's the time to actually physically do the construction, but there's other components, there's complex utility relocations, you know, it depends on how much you take into account. But, not only the access to that right-of-way, you know, to use for construction, but you also don't want to be building new pavement to have it ruined by, you know, construction traffic, too. So, there, there is a, an asset to coordinate that closure for both benefit.
Another question that I had was, how long are you planning to own the property? Is this something that's long-term projecting for you to own? Is it something that you're going to bundle and sell with a bunch of others? Is it something that you?
Right now, there was no initial plan to do any kind of bundle and sell. I mean, we don't, that's not kind of what we do. I mean, it's, looking at it as, it's going to be professionally managed, it's an asset to be held. You know, to be honest with you, I, God, I hate to point out a tragedy in my family life, so, it's hard to say where life would take me if something drastic happened, but I, there is no, it's not a, okay, it's not a turn and burn.
Okay.
That's not, and the loan we're pursuing right now primarily is a HUD loan, which requires a 10-year hold anyway. Well, there are caveats within that, but I would say realistically that it will be held within a portfolio for at least six to seven years after stabilization, which would be three years. So, at least 10 years. But, again, I don't know where life could go, to be honest with you. And, and one thing I did want to mention real quick before I forget, it's on my mind, it had been mentioned about, you know, the parking for the restaurants that aren't going to be able to park on, in the lot anymore, but let's remember that we're building a new lot on Lincoln. And yes, it's not as close to Vincitore, it's not as close to other people that may be next to that lot, but now it's closer to the other commercial users who will be closer to it, so they'll have to just walk a little bit further like the other people do. So, it's not, you've lost one, you're swapping it for another, and yet it may not be close for the people at the south end, but it will be closer to the people at the north end, who now it's further from, if that makes sense.
And before I call trustee Barker, and that's common in most of the downtown areas, they put parking on the backside, they use the valuable land.
You don't want to put a parking lot in your central, I mean, you're, you're taking your prime piece of real estate and putting a parking lot there, it's not, you just don't, it's kind of like an anchor in a commercial building. You don't put FedEx on the corner spot, you put Ralph Lauren, you put, you put the anchor of the best, your best foot forward there.
Again, I didn't hear you thank the chief for not making you go with stick building now. Then you went with the masonry, I know, we, we held firm to that, now it pays off.
Was it the price of lumber?
Yeah, because of the price of lumber. So, thank you, chief. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few questions for, for a number of people, but I did want to say, you know, it's, it's quite a project for the community, it's great to be up here as a trustee, and, you know, contemplate this for our village. I believe the restaurants and the live entertainment venues in town will benefit from this and would support this, barring the, you know, the parking convenience. And I do know that there's a lot available over there. I appreciate all the work of planning and zoning, those meetings were exceptional, the public comment there helped a lot. And, you know, the shaping of the projects to 17 or 18 revisions, whatever it was, I think just makes a better project out of it. Question for the finance director, I'm sure the answer is yes, but I'm assuming all his appraisal and his figures are, you know, up to date, we're not working with numbers from, how long ago did this start? Four years ago? If he could chime in on that.
Good question.
Yeah, I, I will just confirm that, yes, we did, we had additional information provided and our consultant reviewed it again, and we've updated the pro forma. So, it is, they are current numbers.
Thank you. Another question or concern that I have, as I had asked staff the other day about the deliveries, and it was stated here, the deliveries will happen in the back of the building. And then I do remember hearing it somewhere that FedEx or UPS and people like that have delivery rights, where they can pull their truck over, stop it, jump out, deliver their packages. I don't know if that's true or false, but I know I've heard that before. So, they might be in that curb cut where the Uber's going to be. And then, and certainly if they can stop on our streets and jump out and deliver packages to a, you know, to a thriving apartment building here, I think at some point we'd have to address that. So, I'm just pointing it out, good or bad, but I, I am, again, not certain, I just, you see it on 55th Street, and if it can happen on 55th Street, why can't they do it on CAS? You know, they have the ability to stop. The benefit, the added benefit to the businesses around there in our downtown, I think this is nothing but a, a plus when you have a $40 million or $50 million project in a CBD. I don't think it's going to drag it down, I think it's going to, I think it's going to be a catalyst, just like we've seen across the rest of the community with all these other larger projects. So, I want to say thank you for bringing it to us. And then, lastly, I made a note the other day, I think the cedar fence on the north side should be vinyl, because I had cedar in my yard and it didn't last like they said it would. And I want, you know, I want the landscaping and the lighting and the brickwork and everything to be as it should be. And, you know, an architect over there, he doesn't, he doesn't design things, he takes a lot of pride in what he does, and the surfaces don't have to be maintained. I saw some painted material, those will be your problem areas, are shifting and cracking in the mason area, or whatever it happens to be, but let's go with a nice fence and let's go with better than typical landscaping to give the neighbors the screening around that outdoor lot. But, you know, at the very least, put a, put a nice vinyl fence up there that the people that have to look at it every day can say, you know, they didn't skip that detail. So, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I'm going to go to, I don't know if you had a.
I can tell you that there were two separate revisions to the actual landscaping in that lot, based upon comments that came back from the PCC.
Yep, watched the meetings, but thank you.
Okay, thanks. I know trustee Barry has a family responsibility about half an hour, but I'm going to let him go next. And if he has to leave, he will participate Zoom.
Thank you. I'm going to lose this for a second. First of all, Rich, thank you for bringing this to the village, and I know this, you know, going back to the, to the golf course, we've been, we've been trying to get something done for a long, long time. And I also want to thank, you know, the EDC, P&amp;Z, Bruce, and Delaney, of course Spencer, and, and all the staff, as, you know, everyone has mentioned here, there's a lot that goes into this. Thank you, Dr. Esposito, for bringing points forward. I can assure you that every one of those questions that you brought up has been raised from day one through day, you know, as we've heard, 12 different plans that have, have come through. So, again, thank you to all those. And then, Rich, it might understand that, that this rendering that I see here with this like terrapin wall with, with, I think when you originally brought it to EDC, you talked about illuminating it and so forth, you're saying that's been eliminated?
Yes, at the recommendation of staff and PCC, or planning and zoning.
I must have missed that meeting.
Yeah.
Because I tell you, I thought that was one of the nicer positives and really, really set it off architecturally. And, so, it's, again, it's that last rendering that we see in there without that terrapin.
That's correct.
And then.
That's correct.
You know, I, I know we've talked about the traffic and, you know, CAS Avenue is, is an obstacle that we've all been working on for a lot of years. And, and I see in the drawings, and I think this is maybe something more to manager May and staff, but in the drawings, it's still showing a left-hand turn onto CAS to go northbound. And I thought at previous meetings, we had all talked about eliminating that northbound left-hand lane on Burlington, because we know the abuse that goes on there, where people are just blowing the red and they're not going through the green. So, I thought that was always going to be eliminated. I know we're talking about eliminating the left onto Quincy, but I thought that that was part of that traffic, you know, to keep that, those cars off of CAS from coming off of Burlington, I thought that, and Downers Grove is the perfect example of this. You know, you can't come out of the Tivoli and take a left onto Main Street there. You know, that, that is heavily enforced, you would have to go down to Forest or take a right. So, that's what I thought we had envisioned there also.
When you, you actually mean southbound, right? So, we're talking.
I'm sorry, did I say northbound? I'm sorry, yes. So, Burlington heading west, eliminating the left to go southbound. I'm sorry, not northbound.
I know it was brought up, but we are a, a single-crossing community, unlike Downers Grove or the LaGranges, where they can, where they can, you know, eliminate that movement. So, there, that's, it's maintained, it's why it's signalized, and it's why there's a protected left turn lane. So, there is no proposal here to change that. Just confirm.
I still feel that that traffic moved to Irving or Norfolk or anything eliminates that log jam that we constantly see there, which, you know, backs it up to 55th, it backs it up to Naperville Road. With this change, now is the time to take, take advantage of that opportunity, where it's a big enough change, where all of a sudden, people aren't still using that left and so forth. Obviously, there'd have to be a provision in there for our village trucks and so forth, you know, plow season and so forth, but.
So, agreeing with your comment, if you just eliminated the left turn movement, the demand doesn't go away, so they will just move up to Irving on their own, and that's not signalized and it's actually left safe. So, with the, the same thought and a good point, it has to be looked at comprehensively from Irving to Norfolk. And then Burlington itself is a very long collector from the Village of Clarendon Hills, actually, all the way to Downers Grove. And you would be asking all that traffic to go up into the residential neighborhood to make that left-hand turn. So, all of those are factors that, you know, go into the best solution, but appreciate it.
Again, I know that's a long way down the road from tonight, but I, I just think it's something that.
Okay.
Is there's a possibility to take advantage of it. Again, thank you to everyone involved and, and your investment in Westmont. Thank you.
Trustee Brady.
I've got a couple of technical questions. At a garage level, are they going to have a monitor or an exhaust fans in the basement to take exhaust out?
Yeah, there's CO2 detectors on each floor, there were fans that activate when it hits a certain level and just kick everything out.
And there are sprinklers also in there?
It's a fully sprinkled building, yes.
As I have, thank you.
Chief's wrenching his neck.
Chief, chief, back there, chief has been involved in this whole process.
So, very much aware of it.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. I actually want to thank everyone for all the comments, planning and zoning, the developers and everything. I say this, and you guys are probably really tired of hearing me saying this, but I've been here all my life. And I'm going to be honest with you, I am struggling with the size of this building. The seven stories, I just feel that I'm just not really fond of it. Nothing against the development, nothing against redevelopment in the downtown area, but for this, this particular development, I am just really struggling with the size of this building overall. I am worried about coming down south on CAS and you're going to see seven stories. But I, and I just wanted to make those comments known, that I am, I am not against redevelopment, I am not against the developer, I am not against anything, but I just think that this particular development's a little bit too, too much.
And you heard me comment it before, you don't know how many times I've asked the developer to, he started with eight, and went to seven, I said, can't you go lower? And unfortunately, with all the costs involved in this development, it, it wasn't feasible. So, that, again, that's the reason.
And I do understand that, but I'm just looking at, as, and I've been struggling with this, and I am going to be honest with you, I've been struggling with this for a while, but personally, I just think it's just a little too large for that area. But I do want to make my comments known.
We do have slides of comparable buildings that are higher in a presentation, but if you.
Clerk Simmski, you have anything to add or ask?
I think my biggest problem with the project is, it has taken so long. I mean, I remember when you came to our economic development meeting, and that was years, it has to be five or six years ago, four and a, probably.
It was three and a half years ago when it first came in.
More than three.
Well, when the concept came up, it was before that.
But, that, yeah, that's my biggest problem.
I, I agree, and I would say that with, obviously, the, the acquisition of the railroad property needed to be done at, at that point in time, and dealing with the railroad is never quick, obviously, we didn't handle that internally. And then, of course, dealing with ComEd, which is like pulling teeth, did not happen quickly. There were a lot of, as, as far as, we'd like to say, we used to, like to say this was an octopus, it had a lot of arms and legs. But, thank you.
Any additional board?
Just a quick, just a quick comment, Mayor, thank you. It relates to parking and probably more for staff, but I've had a few residents make a few comments that were setting a precedent with kind of potentially approving a pretty significant parking variance in indoor parking. And I thought the packet here addressed that with some other projects we've done, and I think it might be nice for staff to just highlight that, you know, we've done this before, it's a, potentially, if approved, a, a fairly reasonable request. And I just wanted to take a touch on it, I mean, specific to, on page 11 of this packet, comparing it to the Richmond station, you know, it's roughly very, very similar.
Good. Director Sylvester will answer that.
And before it does, just commensurate with parking ratios, too, that the ratios that we are keeping are commensurate with like the Mark and Lyle and other projects similar in its congo.
And, and if we remember from Holiday and other projects we've seen, you know, the world has changed. Uber and these ride share and so forth are so popular, I remember we had somebody who was opposing, and he said, I, I have to admit, my 30-year-old son doesn't have a driver's license. So, you know, a lot of these things are, are changing for what this demographic is. Sorry, Bruce.
Sure. No, I guess the only point I'd make, and you referenced the staff report describing this, but the Holiday project just on the block at 1 West Quincy provides just under 1.2 parking stalls per unit. So, most units will have one, and every fifth unit basically could have, could have two. And then this proposal that's in front of you tonight provides just over 1.2 parking stalls per unit. And if you'll recall, the, the developer explained earlier that the mix of units within the building has, I think it was 40% two bedrooms and the remainder one bedroom and studios. So, if you're looking at studio and one-bedroom units, I think the chances that you're only going to have one car are higher.[1780.37] So this would not be a precedent-setting example. I don't know if Holiday was the first one that provided that type of parking or if there were proposals or developments even before that that we approved that allowed 1.2 parking stalls per unit or not.
I appreciate that. Thank you. While waiting for the mayor, I'm going to just add that of the, you know, the four items that are on here, you know, we talked about the different votes. Three of them are, you know, standard majority, simple majority voting mechanisms. We've got the item C, which is the vacation of the right-of-way. The attorney's notes. I was just filling time, mayor.
That's right. But...
That one item requires a... It's called three-quarters of the trustee's holding office. And for a six-trustee board, that means five are required to approve that as opposed to four in the other examples.
I forgot to ask the attorney if he had anything to add.
I do not...
Good.
Other than to say... Sorry, here's some feedback. The EDA, the development agreement, and the real estate contract still have a little bit of fine tuning to go through with the developer's attorney and with staff. And the ordinance is approve those agreements subject to additional minor modifications provided those modifications don't affect essential terms such as financing or price or other significant major terms. And you have the agreement that those were provided to you recently. So pretty much what you've been given is what's going to be approved.
Thank you. And just one quick comment. I know we've been meeting a couple hours, but planning and zoning does, again, all the heavy lifting. I don't know how many hours they had a public meeting going over this. And without them, we wouldn't be able... We'd be here for another eight hours, probably. So P&amp;Z does our work for us. We appreciate that. I keep commenting that, but two of the members are back there. They find... They went through this. They brought it to us. So at this point, if there's no other questions, I'm going to go through the agenda. And A, 1 North Cass Avenue Tiff Economic Development Agreement. Board to consider ordinance approving an economic development agreement with Westmont Development Corporation, LLC, for the redevelopment of properties around 1 North Cass Avenue. Do I have a motion to approve? So move, Barry?
Second. Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. Any other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
No.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. B, 1 North Cass Avenue, the sale of real estate. Board to consider ordinance approving a real estate sales agreement for the sale by the Village of 1 North Cass Avenue, 14 North Linden, and the parcel known as pin number 0910120034 to Westmont Development Corporation, LLC, for a mixed-use redevelopment project. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Barry?
Second. Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. Any other comments from the board? Seeing done, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
No.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, the 1 North Cass Avenue, the vacation of the right-of-way. Board to consider ordinance approving the vacation of certain public right-of-ways in connection with the 1 North Cass Development. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Barry?
Second. Brady.
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments? Seeing done, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
No.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes because it was necessary to have five trustee votes. D, I'm going to ask the board to consider this one vote in a block, similar to what we do for Consent Agenda. But if anybody wants to take something out of it, we can and discuss it separately.
I should read them all, just so that it's clear what you're voting on. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following zoning and development requests for Westmont Development Corp. for proposed seven-story mixed-use development at 1 North Cass Avenue. One site plan and landscape approval for the proposed seven-story mixed-use development. Two preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate various properties and vacated right-of-ways into a single lot with corresponding public dedications for a proposed seven-story mixed-use development. Three, zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone the vacated Village Rights Way from no zoning to a B1 limited business district. Four, zoning ordinance variance to increase the maximum allowed floor area ratio for a proposed seven-story mixed-use development. Five, zoning ordinance variance to increase the maximum allowed height for a proposed seven-story mixed-use development. Six, zoning ordinance variance to allow a proposed seven-story mixed-use development to encroach into the required front yard setback. Seven, zoning ordinance variance to allow a proposed seven-story mixed-use development to encroach into the required side yard adjoining a street setback. Eight, zoning ordinance variance to allow a proposed seven-story mixed-use development to encroach into the required side yard setback. Nine, zoning ordinance variance to allow a proposed seven-story mixed-use development to encroach into the required rear yard setback. Ten, zoning ordinance variance to reduce the number of total... To reduce the total number of parking spaces required for both the multiple-family residential and commercial components of the proposed seven-story mixed-use development. Eleven, zoning ordinance special use permit for 14 North Linden to allow outdoor parking in the R5 general residence district. Twelve, zoning ordinance variance for 14 North Linden to remove the parking lot screening requirements from the north side yard. Thirteen, zoning ordinance variance for 14 North Linden to reduce the interior parking lot landscaping requirements. Fourteen is zoning ordinance variances for 14 North Linden to allow parking to encroach into the front yard, side yard, adjoining a street, and in front of the setback line. Fifteen, zoning ordinance special use permit for 20 North Linden Street to allow outdoor parking in an R3 single-family detached residence district. Sixteen, zoning ordinance variances for 20 North Linden to allow parking in the front yard and in the front of the setback line. Seventeen is zoning ordinance variance for 20 North Linden Street to remove the parking lot screening requirements from the south side yard. Eighteen, zoning ordinance variance for 20 North Linden to reduce the interior parking lot landscaping requirements. And nineteenth, lastly, development agreement for a seven-story multi-use development. That is the block that we're talking about.
We've got a question.
Yes, I believe there's an error in the agenda listing. That corporation, that is an old corporation from three years ago. The entity that applied, the entity's corporation is Westmont Apartments, LLC.
Okay. We'll note that.
And is John... Is Mr. Zemanek still on?
Yes, he is.
He can verify that, then.
And, yeah, we recently got that clarification from the developer's team this week. And the ordinances that were distributed to everyone do list the proper developer's name, which is Westmont Apartments, LLC.
I just want to make sure that's clear in these approvals and that it doesn't screw that vote up.
I think you just got your answer.
Okay.
I think... At this point, does anybody have any item they'd like removed from this block? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve all 19 as presented.
Motion to approve all 19 as presented. Nero.
Second. Barry. Motion made in second. Any comments? Seeing done, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
No.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. So we're looking forward to the development moving forward. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to comment on?
No, I'd just like to thank you very much. And again, thanks staff for all their hard work and everything, and especially P&amp;Z and for all the work and all the diligence that was done. And again, to thank you all for your time and consideration. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Look forward to it, too.
Thank you.
Get the shovels ready.
Yeah.
You have the end of the agenda, Easton.
Yeah. Unless anybody has anything else...
Our attorney looks so professional when he comes across like that. He's... That's great, isn't it? I mean, Zemanek, he could be on TV, Josh.
Yeah. Any miscellaneous items other than this is probably the last vote other than to roll call for trustee Barry. But next week is the swearing-in of the newly-elected officers, trustees, clerk, and mayor. So no... Yes, trustee Barker.
I just want to, you know, I want to take the time just to thank the board. You know, this wasn't an easy decision for anybody. It's not a perfect project, but I believe it's a darn good one. And we all struggled with it. We all thought about it. And it's been going on in our minds for four or five years. The day is finally here. But I want to thank the board for the time and effort they put in as well. And trustee Barry for his eight years.
We'll get to sing to him next meeting.
What are we going to sing?
I don't know about singing, but the problem is I'm going to let him say stuff, too. And again, Doc, I appreciate it. We're hoping all the positive than what you're... You know, it's a process. So anybody else has any comments? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Brady and Guzzo. I just had to get the names. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Did you get them all? No. You?
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
You were gone, too.
Should have had my last one be a no.
Again, I want to thank everybody for coming and listening to this special meeting. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.